The Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 Norwood Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid format. As always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Got a little bit of an echo here, I think, maybe? No? Gone? Good. Okay. Pretty big agenda, so we'll get right into it. Item number one, warrant signature update submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representative.
Motion to file?
Motion to file made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item number two, meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting meeting minutes from the September 26, 2023 meeting. Pleasure of the board. Motion to approve minutes made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
I didn't second.
I was gonna say.
Oh, you were gone. I thought I saw you a little elbow there. Seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Abstain.
One abstention. Chair votes yes, four to zero. Great. That brings us to our first appointment. Item 3.1, capital plan for discussion. Mr., start with Mr. Donnelly. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, I'll give a brief report as chair of the Capital Outlay Committee. So, the Capital Outlay Committee met, basically, we've met 10 times thus far in 2023 to consider the capital plans for FY '24. In September, I think that was our meeting where we really were able to, after having met with the general manager and schools and other departments, to vet the projects that are on the plan. We postponed our vote in September. Let me just back up a little. I think the committee at that point in time was comfortable that all the projects listed on the Capital Outlay have merit. The committee did defer to October, at which time they felt that there would be better sense of financially where the town was, specifically what would our free cash number look like. So, on October the 3rd, we met to consider the plan once again. At the suggestion of the committee, Mr. Mizuko and his team moved some of the projects out of the borrowing line, I think particularly the road repair project of 2.8 million. Typically, we borrow for that. That was moved into the cash line. We had a free cash certification of $12.9 million, very good certification. Through the use of some of that free cash, as well as $2 million or thereabouts in money from the Forbes estate sale, we were able to put forward only two projects that require borrowing. They are rather large projects, which Mr. Mizuko will get into momentarily. They are the Hawes project and the traffic signalization project on Washington Street. Our vote was six to three, with the three members noting that they would be more comfortable to have more definition around our cash position and perhaps more discussion on some of our projects. However, the majority of the board felt that, given our cash position, 12.9, given the needs of the Capital Outlay projects, particularly those two large ones that we spoke of, that it had merit for us to push those projects on forward for approval, as opposed to delaying them any further. As the committee did note, that oftentimes when we are delaying some of these projects, we're incurring escalating costs. So, that's my brief report. We will meet once again after town meeting to consider the full plan, those projects that are listed on the five-year plan. That will be done sometime after our November meeting. And with that, I'll turn to over to Mr. Mizuko for the specifics of the project work.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. I vote for the capital projects that will be coming before town meeting. Feel free to just grab me and raise your hand if you have a question during them. If we get a lot, we'll just wait till the end and sort of truncate the questions. First up is the airport runway safety area design. This project paves the 300-foot safety area at the end of the runway, which is currently unpaved. It was identified as a number-one priority in the airport master plan, designed in FY ' '24 with estimated construction in FY '26. And consistent with most FAA projects, this is, our appropriation is about 10% of the total project cost, runs between 5% and 10% of the project cost for an airport project.
Just, excuse me?
Yep.
There's so many different projects coming and going, it seems, at the airport recently, and at different times that we hear about them. So, this might be one we've already heard about. Is this the one we recently, not that long ago, voted to sign, approve?
We have the chairman of the Airport Commission, the airport manager here, who I think can get into that.
Good evening, Mr. Chan.
Good evening, Mr. Ryan. Good evening, Mr. Raymond.
Mr. Plasko's question, no. What you just signed recently was the runway 1028 reconstruction, the grant with...
Yet another one.
And prior to that was a taxiway C.
Further questions of this particular project before we? Mark, you may as well stay here. The next one's an airport project.
And the 300-foot is safety instead of direct, you know, whatever's at the end of the airport?
So, right now, right, back in 2000, when they reconstructed 1735, they constructed a safety area at the end of each end of the runway, 1735. And it's 300 feet long, 100 feet wide, the same as the runway, but it's grass. And a lot of the year, it's not available because we don't plow grass. So, that was our number-one priority back in 2019. We started the master plan update that we wanted to make that usable in the event there's an overrun on the runway or a short landing, that safety area would become available. In the winter, it's not available. We just don't plow turf. So, this would pave 300 feet on each end to make that available in the event that there's an overrun or a short landing.
So, if we have a section of runway, I'm a layman, I'm not even sure if I'm asking the right question, but if that allows certain-sized types of planes to come in, and we add this, even if it's not day-to-day designated as runway because it's safety area, is it not known by control tower and everybody else involved in the air business that say there was an emergency or something, would that in itself allow logic planes to come in and out?
No. No, it is rated for what's classified as a B-2 aircraft. That would not change. If we went to 5,000 feet, which is the ideal runway length, right now, it's 4,000 feet runway. If we went to 5,000, which is ideal, it still would not change. The runway is designed for a B-2 aircraft, and that would not change with the paving of the safety areas.
Aircraft category, I don't want people to think B-2 bombers are coming in here, but that's just the categorization that lists what type and size planes can actually come in and out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's an important distinction to make, just because it's confusing. And, Mr. Raymond, you did a really good job explaining to me when I asked you this question that that safety area exists now. It's not used all the time because, like you said, in the winter, it's not plowed. So, this is really just in and of itself making it a safer runway.
Correct.
It's not allowing for larger planes.
No.
Okay. And then the design cost is here, but then the actual paving is about a half million bucks down the road, right? Correct. Got it.
The actual paving would be more than a half million dollars, but that'll be funded...
That's our piece, is?
Our piece would be a lot, yeah, be 5% of whatever the cost is.
Yeah.
FAA would pay 90%, and Mast I would pay the other 5%, and we would pay 5%.
Great.
The other airport project up is the wildlife fence replacement. This is one of two phases. The airport is, as you know, has over 600 acres. There's a significant amount of wildlife. We had a strike just, I think, a month or two ago. This is a two-phase project that will replace about 20,000 linear feet. It was initially installed in about 2001, so the fence is over 20 years old and fading, failing. $140,000 represents our contribution to the total project cost. This is one of two phases. I know the question I've gotten on this is, geez, a couple million dollars for a fence? That seems like a lot. One of the important things to remember, this is about four miles of fence because it's over 20,000 linear feet. Not that we're gonna go in detail on every project, but Mark, since you're here, chairman of the Airport Commission, is there anything you want to add on the wildlife fence or Mark Raymond?
This is another safety project, pure and simple. Protect the flying public and, you know, lives are at stake if they're landing on runways where there are large animals, and this is to prevent it.
Verify for me, as I share, for the ultimate project, 280,000 or 140,000?
140 per year.
Each year, so total two...
280 total.
280 of today's dollar peasants.
Correct.
It's three, is it not three phases?
That's one expensive fence.
140,000 each?
Two phases.
Two phases.
Three million-dollar fence. Wow.
Four miles of fence.
Yeah. Yeah. Can I have the cock of the bid specs, please?
Actually, Mark, about how wide is Norwood?
Excuse me?
How wide is Norwood? Off the top of your head, you should just be able to... I'm just worrying...
Town itself?
Yeah.
Well, it's ten and a half square miles.
Right. So, this fence would probably run from town border to town border if we stretched it out.
Yeah.
About that, yeah. So, it is, it's a lot of, it's a large fence. All right. Thank you, Mark. Other questions on this project?
Mark, is that an eight-foot, 10-foot fence? How big is that fence for the deer?
10-foot.
10-foot? Okay.
Moving on to some of our other projects. This project would replace the parking lot at the Savage Center. As the board knows, we've been systematically going through and replacing and repairing parking lots throughout town, having done the downtown lots this year and the town hall lot this year. We did the Old Ham and the Willet. This would continue the project with the Savage Center lot. We did do the senior center, I believe, three years ago, so this would just be a replacement of the Savage Center lot, which, as you can see, is original to the building over 40 years ago and in relatively rough shape. And I'll just go through these quickly. If you want to stop me and grab me and go back, we will. Designer study for the apparatus floor at the fire station. We're asking for $75,000 for an investigation into the apparatus floor in the fire station. It's always in use by the fire department. There are millions of dollars' worth of equipment on there. There's a system that treats the chemicals and runoff from the equipment under the floor. And there's concerns about the overall condition of the floor, whether or not it's starting to bevel as vehicles back in and out of it. So, we need to have an engineering and architectural firm come in and do some investigation for us. Let us know if the structure under it is sound. Certainly, it's a ground-floor structure, so it's not like it can collapse into a hole or anything like that, but any major failure on the floor, a crack or a divot, would mean we'd have to place fire equipment outside or some other location, which is less than ideal. Our firefighters also work on this floor every day and respond to all calls from the floor, and we do our vehicle maintenance in there as well, so it's not just a garage floor. It's a critical area of the building.
Mr. Donnelly may have had a point.
Just a quick question. So, Mr. Mizuko, this item did come up at our last meeting of the Capital Outlay. Usually, when we do have a design project that's funded like this, on the out years, whether it's '25, '26, '27, '28, we see a corresponding construction project. For this particular one, the committee noted there isn't any construction project for the upcoming years on the plan. Would you kind of just brush and help me bring that, please?
Sure. It's really, I'd call it engineering and investigative work into what may or may not be wrong with it, what its condition is and what we need to do. We couldn't project what a project cost is because it's not a straightforward. We don't know if there's a problem underneath the structure that could cost a lot of money. We could end up having a $5,000 repair, a $50,000 repair, somebody saying you gotta replace the whole system and upgrade the chemical treatment, and it's $600,000. We just can't speculate at this point what work's gonna need to be done. We just know we need more money than we'd normally absorb in the operating budget to realistically be able to investigate and have an engineering for a model, what may be wrong with the floor, what work may need to be done, and what the impact of that is. So, it's, in some ways, almost a combination of feasibility and design. If we do an investigation, it comes back that, actually, it's fine, there's not much you need to do. Great, we're done, and we're not gonna look at it again for another 20 years. But it's a complicated piece of, I wouldn't call it equipment, but it's a complicated piece of a facility.
Is it fair to say that if we do the design work and we find that there is a substantial investment needed to do something with the floor, then your team would certainly benchmark or put that project on the capital plan for subsequent funding?
Absolutely. And where that goes will depend on, again, what the investigation ends up telling us. Is it an immediate need, and we have to spend a lot of money right away? It'll go on next year's plan, or if it's an immediate need, it'll happen almost right away? If somebody says, well, the next time you're looking to make an improvement, maybe you gotta replace the system in five to 10 years, you should probably do this, then that's something that might appear on a far-out outer list, or we might say, you know what? It's really not in the five-year horizon. Or there might be a $20,000 repair cost that we need to make, and we can take it out of that initial appropriation, or that's something that the facilities department could do once we know.
So, in essence, also, since there is such a mystery as to whether or not the floor needs replacement, it's not really possible at this point to even project or benchmark a cost for a construction project down the line?
Absolutely. And I'm not sure why Capital Outlay flagged this in particular. A couple of years ago, we appropriated a roof study, which is ongoing now, where we said, we believe there's likely work to be done on our roofs, we wanna look at it comprehensively. We asked for money to look at it comprehensively. The results of that study will tell us, when do we need to program things out? Knock on wood, we don't have any roofs that are leaking a lot today, so I don't assume we need to run into town meeting in two months and ask to replace a roof, but maybe something appears three years out because they say, hey, you're kind of skating on thin ice here. So, it's no different than that. We are, usually when we're doing design, followed immediately by a project, it's really, we know that project is happening. The pool's an example. The traffic lights are an example of that, not necessarily the case in here.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Give me one second. I just had a request to be... Jess, can you allow somebody into the virtual meeting if you can? See if I can get on here. Next up is a replacement of the mechanics truck at $120,000. This is, I should say, sorry, the fire department mechanics truck. It's an '07, it was a brush truck. This is one of the vehicles that likely won't appear on our regular vehicle replacement plan, only because it's sort of an oddball in their fleet. It only gets replaced realistically every 10 to 15 years, so it's not gonna come up in a regular rotation. What we're trying to build into the operating budget is our regular replacement of vehicles. We don't build in something that might only need to be replaced every 12 to 15 years, but we've certainly got our use out of it. Next up is red dot firearms. This is police equipment. Police equipments, police pistols equipped with optics are becoming the standard throughout the state. The state police is now issuing firearms with these optics. We ran a pilot program for a while and tested them out on the range and found that the number of officers who were able to score 100% increased significantly from those scoring in the 80s or 90s. Obviously, discussing firearms and the acquisition of firearms can be sensitive, and we certainly want to be sensitive to that, but it is a critical piece of the police department's equipment that they need and they need to use and function every day. It certainly will be safer for officers. We actually have not paid for firearms since the early 90s. We've been able to use a combination of trade-ins and forfeiture money. Unfortunately, the current sidearms cannot be upgraded to the site system. The site system has to be purchased, so this would allow us to purchase and upgrade, and hopefully in the future, we'd be able to do the same, but not having to replace sidearms in 30 years is still a pretty good deal. And again, the police department, before making this request, did go ahead and do their own in-house test project and found that the accuracy increased significantly. One of our small equipment items, our regular replacement of tasers for the police department. This is probably high on our list of items to get into the operating budget. That is a question we get quite a bit. Why isn't this just in the operating budget? If the operating budget magically had all the money in the world, everything would be in the operating budget, we wouldn't have a capital plan. But we've been working vehicles into the budget, and we've done that very successfully over the last five or six years, up to over $800,000 in the operating budget. We sort of want to try to finish that, know that we've solved that problem, and then we'll start moving into some of the small equipment that we know is similar to rolling stock that just has to be replaced on a regular basis. This is year four of our road paving program, $2.8 million. We came up with a five-year program, investing about $2.8 million in catch-up on our roads. We have borrowed for the first three of those years. The proposal would be to pay for this out of cash, combination of free cash and Forbes' money that otherwise would have went into stabilization. It's important that we sort of finish the, finish the race on this program, so to speak, finish the race on the road with year four, and then follow up to year five, and then if we wanted to look comprehensively, addressing sidewalks or another piece of the infrastructure, we can. But this plan was built out with a certain level of investment, and then once we're set, as long as we're making small adjustments to the road budget every year, we can maintain our roads in the condition that we've been investing heavily in for the last several years to get. At one point, somebody in Capital Outlay had asked if we could kick this off, and certainly you could kick any project off, that sort of recalculates the whole norm, and we might sort of lose some of the value of the investment we've made over the last couple of years, but it did nonetheless go through Capital Outlay. And this, of course, is in addition to the roughly $850,000, $900,000 we receive from Chapter 90 every year from the state and $600,000 in the operating budget.
We have a few questions here. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah. You mentioned coming from the proceeds from the Forbes estate. Where's the rest of it?
Free cash.
It's sitting as free cash.
Sorry, you talk about, was the rest of the Forbes money? So, what happened with Forbes is, we wanted to place it in three buckets, and the state sort of said, nope, 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 you're not allowed to place it in three buckets. It stays in one magical bucket over here until you use it for one of these approved reasons. Most of our reasons were the same reason, but they won't let us put it into a fund for capital expenses. We can spend it on capital expenses directly. It's a quirk in the state law that's just a little... Our situation of how much we netted from Forbes is not what the law was designed to do.
But it's in a separate...
Bucket, if you will.
Yeah, it's not in the free cash, it just got recertified.
Correct. It is not included in that.
Okay.
Mr. Donnelly?
Mr. Mizuko, so to your point, this is one project that has moved into the cash line as opposed to borrowing. I know I had this number on the top of my head. By paying for this project with cash, how much money are we saving from the debt service payment for 2.8?
So, about, it's, about $260,000. The cost of this bond is a little bit higher because we can only borrow for 15 years for the road projects. That's the expected life of the project. So, spending 2.8 million on cash on this versus another project that we can borrow over 30 years gets us more bang for our buck if you're looking at the flexibility in the operating budget.
Great, thanks.
Washington Street at Hawes Brook, Brooks Bridge rehabilitation. We've been pretty aggressive in making sure we're keeping up on our bridge infrastructure, which is a critical need across the Commonwealth. This would allocate $712,000 out of free cash to make significant repairs to the bridge. As you can see there, the condition of the bridge is relatively poor. Just, we've done two previous bridge replacements in the last four or five years ago. Interestingly enough, I think it was three years ago today, the Dean Street Bridge reopened. But we've done the Dean Street Bridge, and we've done the Westover Parkway Bridge, both of which we actually received significant funding from the state, dramatically reducing our overall cost. We don't know, we don't think we'll be successful in this round with a grant for this bridge because of the particular particulars of it, but even if you add that cost to these costs, we'd be looking at, call it 1.2 or 1.3 million of town money over the course of just over five or six years to replace or significantly rehabilitate and repair three bridges is still a pretty good number and consistent with our investment in infrastructure that we've been making.
Mr. Sad?
Mr. Mizuko and Mr. Ryan, are we, Mark, are we gonna put where the blue railings are on the Hawes Bridge? Are those coming down and putting ballast, so the kids...
Those will remain.
Oh, they will remain?
Yeah, they'll be sanded and repainted.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan, those pictures are pretty dramatic of the condition that the bridge is in. No safety concerns at the moment?
No.
Okay. It's mostly the aesthetics of the...
Yes.
Okay.
Most of these generation of bridges built in the, built during the depression, candidly, are actually some of the best bridges out there.
Yeah.
And as I always remind folks, we still have two sections of sidewalk in town that were built by the WPA in the 30s, in the 30s, and they're still, other than a couple of frost heaves, some of the best sidewalks we've ever, we ever actually had.
They knew what they were doing.
That they did. Next project up is the Elspont Dam improvements. So, this is just significant rehabilitation repairs to the Elspont Dam. The Conservation Commission contracts with specialists every two years for a full inspection of the dam, and this is a result of that latest inspection that we're looking to make these repairs, including resetting the tow chain, replacing and resetting the seals on the middle gate, and then we also need to have, as part of that, a professional diver come in and actually check the low-level outlets of the dam. One of the larger projects we're seeing at $5 million, which we're projecting to borrow over the course of 30 years, is the traffic signals at Washington and Manhattan Street. This is really the traffic signals for the corridor. As I always tell, it is one system, it is designed to work in sync, it was all timed to work in sync. The system, however, is about 40 years old. It is failing. It's not just the physical equipment that you're seeing there failing. I almost thought about putting up pictures of where it almost looks like we're giving a middle finger because some of the fingers are broken, and then somewhere the little image of the guy is missing a leg. The system is failing, the wiring is failing. It's more than 40 years old, and it is not designed to last as long as it is, so it is time to replace the system. It will be replaced with a modern system. It is, as I said, just failing. It's currently what I would call a dummy system. If one set of lights goes out of sequence because there's a power outage, there's an accident or something, we physically have to go rewire it and reprogram it to try to work in sync. Modern systems avoid that, but it's just the rate of failure on the system is increasing, and it causes traffic havoc. So, if you've ever been somewhere downtown where it seems like you're stuck at one of the lights in this corridor and all the rest of them are going, it means there's a problem, and somebody has to go out and fix it. And candidly, you can even tell, not that it's just the cost of the physical infrastructure, but go out and look at some of the boxes. They're beat up, they're bent in, new plates have been welded on, new plates have been screwed on. It's more than served its lifetime with us, but a large project, significant ADA enhancements come along with a modern system as well.
This would probably improve the pedestrian use of the traffic signals. You won't have to wait three minutes for the lights to cycle before you can cut across them, that you can...
They'll all work, which is probably the first biggest improvement, and we should even have the ability to have some degree over how we want the system timed based on time of day and time of night for the pedestrian signals. It just, it also gives us the flexibility to make adjustments a lot easier than now, where we literally have to call a vendor in who has to come in and rewire and reprogram every time we want to do something slightly different. But again, it's a 40-year-old system that's failing that needs to be replaced. Water utility truck coming out of retained earnings. This is just a replacement of a large water vehicle. 2010 truck, 80,000 miles, 84,000 miles on it, rotten cab mounts, cracked utility body, transmission issues. We may eventually be able to work into the water budget, vehicle replacement, but the large water vehicles tend to be replaced on an off regular schedule and are very expensive. So, it might be that we put a pickup truck in there, but a large vehicle like this is still only gonna come up every 10 to 15 years. Replacement of the street sweeper. This is our 2010 street sweeper, which we use daily for bulk of the year, probably about seven or eight months. We originally wanted to replace the street sweeper last year and to do the sewer vac truck this year. We had a critical failure of the sewer vac truck last year, which required us to adjust the plan, purchase the vac truck last year, and delay the street sweeper one more year. We certainly could have done both last year, we couldn't have done both this year, the vac truck was, needed to get replaced, but we try not, we want to be responsive to make sure our vehicles work. We try not to replace too much in one year for no other reason than we know at some point the cycle's gonna come up, or we're gonna do it all again in a year. There is a proposal to pay for this out of retained earnings because the general, which There is a proposal to pay for this out of retained earnings because the general, which is the water fund, because the general fund did pay for, the streets, did pay for the vac truck last year. And we'd made that comment then that the water sewer fund could absorb this cost. It is also somewhat a stormwater-related cost, which some of that is budgeted in the water sewer anyway. It is at some point six one way, half a dozen the other way with water retained earnings versus free cash. But because we had to move the projects up, planning to originally pay for the sewer this year out of retained earnings, the sewer vac truck, the idea that was given to Capital Outlay was let's pay for this out of retained earnings. We are allowed to reimburse the general fund for up to two years of capital projects that the general fund has paid for water sewer projects.
Mr. Plasko has a comment.
I absolutely support replacing this piece of equipment, does a great job. But I'm absolutely opposed to the idea of using retained earnings.
Thank you.
Largest single project on the capital plan is the replacement of our water tanks. As everyone knows, we currently purchase all of our water from the MWRA. Two of our, our two water storage tanks are stored at the cemetery, most of you assume have seen them. The tanks have done a great job throughout the course of their life. Unfortunately, one of them being built in 1958 and the other one being built in 1939, they are reaching the end of their life cycle. Replacing both tanks is the most cost-effective option over the long run. We looked at a couple of different options. One was replacing both tanks, one was replace one and repair one, one was, and then one was repair both. If you look at those costs out and we had our engineering firm do this for us, if you look at it out over 30 years, this is the cheapest cost. If we just repair both, we will simply be here in 10 and 15 years again. If we repair one and replace one, we'll still be looking at five or six or seven million dollars. And in 10 or 12 years, we'll be looking at replacing one again. We can't change the fact, you can spend all the money in the world, that one of the tanks was built in the 30s and one of them was built in the 50s. Again, built well, last well, just well beyond their expected useful life cycle. Now, the price tag on this is particularly large, but there's a couple of things to look at with the timeline and particularly what options we have as we go into the borrowing. We would be continuing design through July, we did receive design funds last year. We'd be going to bid sometime between July and October, construction of 2024. Construction would start and commence between October and 2024 roughly and December of 2028, as it is a multi-year project. Now, on the right-hand side, you'll look at the amounts due based on the calendar year with the projected borrowing from the state's revolving loan fund. The benefit to the state's revolving loan fund is we don't actually pay until the project has completed. So we wouldn't actually have a payment due until roughly fiscal '29. So we've lined out here the rate impact of this project and our other projects just to show everyone where we'd be looking at in roughly '29 with the water tank project. You're looking at it might, in today's dollars, be around a 4.5% or 5% rate increase for that project. However, we would look at pausing our local lining program for probably the two years prior to that to absorb that rate increase. There again, we still have our local impact on rate increase, which is our local cost and the MWRA cost. The zero lining MWRA cost in here is the 0% loan we're able to get every year. So by scheduling, we need the appropriation now to go ahead and apply to the state revolving loan fund and to be able to sign a contract and get the work done. With the state revolving loan fund, we don't have to actually pay for this till 2029. Given the value of money, this works out well for the town. The state's revolving loan fund for water projects is flush as a result of a lot of federal money over the last several years. This projected rate analysis just for capital projects, I would use the column on the right, is sort of worst-case scenario. These projects, I mean, we're borrowing a flat amount, so they're not likely to change. We are looking at a potential one-time sources of revenue in the next couple of years for water and sewer connections that may be able to pay for the INI project or the chamber construction, just depending on when those come in and when they go. That would offset it. So this is sort of presented as worst-case scenario cost of these projects. That being said, the project itself is large. Are there questions on the water tank project?
I guess any question?
No, you go ahead.
So just, I do like the plan, I like, I like the, I think it's necessary that we pause the water line project, given the amount of debt service we have from the SRF fund. I just think we need to have a contingency as to what if we don't get the approval for the SRF fund. And that, and if we were to not be approved for that, I think we'd go back to the drawing board on this one.
We'd still be, I agree, we'd still be doing the project. I think it would just be that the water lining would be paused for more years, it would be paused earlier. We would still do the water lining for the next two or three cycles because again, our debt service doesn't hit until fiscal '29 for this. If that payment started coming in earlier, we can look at getting creative with how we ban it, how we finance it to rearrange it, we would get there the same way. We're projecting the costs at the estimated rate of borrowing around 4%, which is what bond council advises municipal bonds are going out at. The SRF is a lower rate, so it's possible that the numbers will come in lower, but we're being conservative and projecting at what we know we can get out in the open market.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mizuko, I'm 100% against this because of the fact that these tanks were built for the seven big factories in Norwood. And it's only one day of water that we have had an emergency. That's a huge number, 14 million, probably going to be 18 million. We've got two lines coming in from the MWRA at 36 inches. Can we clean them, Mr. Ryan? Can we clean those inside or send, how they do with these other tanks in different towns that I've called? And it's probably a million dollars to clean them and prep them and restore them? Is that something we can look into?
We did, Mr. Sad, we looked into it, that was one of the three options. One was to rehabilitate the two of these and it came out to $5 million to do that. There were a lot of upgrades, required safety upgrades along with all the lining and prep work that had to be done. Over the long term, as Mr. Mizuko was talking about, is the best option is replace them because if you do not replace them and you rehabilitate them, you're going to be back in 10 years replacing them. All right, one of them right now is 84 years old, the other tank is 65 years old. They've met their life expectancy, all right? And it makes really not very good economic sense to try to keep them going. It's time to upgrade these for many reasons, for water quality, for system supply. The best option, as we looked at it, was replacing the two of them. Believe me, that's the last thing we want to do is spending more than we have to. But this is the best option over the long term for the town in Norwood.
But we only get a day's worth of water if there's ever an emergency from the MWRA?
Correct.
That's a huge number for one day's worth of water.
Correct, and that's a safe way and that's the recommendation to have a day's supply available.
How's the height on that new tower versus the old tower for the neighbors?
The same, we wouldn't change the height, we just can't for the system. The elevations have to stay the same.
Okay.
Mr. Donnelly had another comment, then Mr. Plasko.
In addition to the water supply, could you address the role the tanks play in maintaining the pressure in the system for distribution?
Right, so the tanks serve the purpose of storing water, availability. The number one, in my opinion, benefit of it is we have connection to the MWRA. If that ever went down, which it has in the past, and if we didn't have water tanks, we'd have no water, we'd be out. With the water tanks, it provides you 24 hours of supply to fight fires, to go about your business. Obviously, you would notify residents, which I remember back in the 80s, that, you know, notice went out, don't use water if you don't have to. All right, so it provides storage in the event of emergency. As far as system pressures, it provides a constant pressure to the system. That's why when our, you know, when you see a water tank, it's usually at the highest point in town because at that highest point, it's providing, gravity is providing pressure throughout the system and it's maintained, it's not fluctuating all over the place. So if all of a sudden there's a fire, all right, going on over this section of town, that pressure is maintained, all right? If you don't have tanks and you have a fire over here, all of a sudden your system gets all, you know, confused, there's pressures going on. This is requiring all the water over here, this system over here, because you're under a pressurized system, can't keep up, and people are losing pressure over here. They can't do what they normally do for business over here. So there's a pressure benefit out of the tanks here. The EPA requires communities to look at their water system annually and identify vulnerable parts of it. If we took a tank out, we would be more vulnerable and EPA would look very, not kindly on us on that. Mass DEP, we'd have to go to them because it'd be a major system change if we removed the tanks. And conversations with them by our consultant is they would not support removing the tanks. So the tanks provide so many different benefits. You know, they're just out in an area that people don't see for the most part and they provide constant service 24 hours a day, providing us great pressure, great water quality, and great volumes for whatever use they needed throughout the town.
Mr. Plasko, you have a comment?
Well, he just covered a lot of what I wanted to have come out, so thank you. Having to do with the pressurizing of the system and so forth. The only other comment I have, I guess, is being critical. We were giving books with all kinds of information about the study that led to this, but we haven't talked about it till tonight. Mr. Sad's come up with a negative feeling about this, but never had the opportunity to hear feedback and everything. And we shouldn't be having that happen tonight, we're voting to go forward and go to town meeting and everything. This should have been on our earlier agenda and discussed. I support it, I did have a part of a discussion that included Fred Lasky from the MWRA. And question was concerning whether we actually even needed towers since this, you know, redundant line and so forth. And he said, every system has the towers, every system has the need for these and absolutely endorses, not necessarily what we do here, we didn't run the options by him, but the fact that you can't just do away with the towers, we need the towers. And so I support it, I'm just a little critical of the process.
Point well taken, Mr. Plasko. I do think Capital Outlay probably ran a little bit later than we anticipated this year with their full 10 meetings, we probably intended to bring this sooner.
Yeah, but didn't have to wait for Capital Outlay.
That's true.
Yeah, may I also just chime in with that? So I only, I agree with Mr. Plasko. I think that perhaps one of the things that the selectmen can consider going forward is that before these projects come for formal vote by the Capital Outlay, that we have a meeting with the selectmen first, so we can go through that. Actually, as your representative on Capital Outlay, I think I'm a much more informed member of Capital Outlay. If I can sit at the meeting and say that we have vetted these projects in and have these following comments. So I would support the change in sequencing of the meetings.
Further questions on the tanks? Next is our annual... What's that?
We have a public hearing.
I'll go quickly. Water improvement program, this is our annual $4.5 million borrowing to line pipes. We are looking to buy, depending on the water tank project, 2029 or 2030, thereabouts, to have our entire system lined. We're about in the middle of the pack for MWRA communities in terms of where they are with their lining. This is an annual 30-year borrowing, part of a 10-year plan. And in addition, that is our annual $630,000 from the MWRA. This is our zero-interest loan that we have to do over 10 years, but we get it from the MWRA at zero interest. Getting close to the end here, the other large project on the docket is the Hawes Pool construction. This would replace the existing Hawes Pool, $5.7 million. The pool itself is 75 years old, the design was approved last year. We are putting in for grants for this, but it looks like $5.7 would be the full cost. And as the board remembers, about six years ago, we did the bathhouse over, which I believe was at a cost of about $1.5 million. Questions on the pool? Moving on, just the proposed funding schedule, you can see here, and the board, of course, has this. $2.7 million in free cash, $10.7 million in borrowing from the general fund, $2 million of Forbes money, $506,000 retained earnings, $19,306,950 from water borrowing. And on the right-hand side, you can see the appropriate fund balances. The free cash number this year did come in at $12.9 million, which is a record for the town in Norwood, far exceeding our average and any other year for free cash.
Anything further, Mr. Mizuko?
No, the capital plan.
Okay, looking for a motion for approval?
Sure, that would be...
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as presented for presentation at the town meeting in November.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye?
I'm in favor with my one reservation, it's not going to make me vote against the whole plan.
Okay, we should make note of that.
Make note of Mr. Sad's concerns as well.
I'm with Bill.
Yep, okay. The chair votes yes, unanimous with notation. Great, Mr. Ryan and Ms. Raymond, do you mind sticking around for a little bit? We've got two public hearings that we're going to take now because we're a little late. And then we'll circle back and do the construction update for the airport, is that okay? Just grab those two seats there, okay, great. Okay. 7:00 PM, Northeast Sky Investments, doing business as Norwood Sunoco, transfer of license and change of location hearing. Chancellor, would you mind reading?
...........................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, I think we have someone here, or they were here, perhaps out in the hallway? Okay, all right, come on in. How are you doing, take a seat. Yeah, right there, great. Welcome, if you could introduce yourself, tell us why you're here, and we'll go from there.
Fadi Kasouf, applying for a B&amp;W license for the Sunoco station.
Excellent, good. So we will open up questions from the board, comments, and as it is a public hearing, anyone from the public can also make comments.
Okay.
Questions, concerns from the board?
I don't know if this, President, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this was here before I was on, but didn't they come before us before?
Yeah, April 26 of 2022.
That's what I remember being in discussion, all right.
Yes, so previously you applied for a license.
Correct.
And were not awarded one.
Yes, previously there was a free one available from the town. Applied for that and I was not awarded that one. I then approached Cedar Market and they were selling theirs and decided to pay money for it and come back in front of the board, state my case again and hopefully get awarded the license as possible.
Okay, great. Mr. Plasko?
Question, I'm trying to rethink, think back to the first hearing. You have more than one license? You have another license?
With the town, no.
No, not in this town, in your business, your name is on a license.
We have an experience in the B&amp;W license, we have two other stores.
Two others, so this would make the third?
They're full liquor, yeah. The other ones are in Sudbury and South Grove.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The other ones are in Sudbury and South Grove.
So this will be a third?
This will be a third.
I'm just curious, because if it was your fourth, other things have to happen. So you're safe with three.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, so just to Mr. Sad's earliest point, I know last year I raised some concerns when the license came before us. At that time, there was another license in play for a facility opposite you and that license has been given up, that facility across the street from you doesn't maintain a license. So any objection that I may have had last year, I no longer have them with this particular license.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Plasko?
On your floor plan?
Yes.
Can you be more specific where the product's going to be? You have gondolas, is that going to be all beer and wine or is that mixing with other products?
We're going to be mixing it with other products. Right now, we have a walk-in cooler. We will be using three doors from that for beer and wine. And then we will put in another two doors where we currently have a nice storage freezer. We're going to be putting some beer in there as well. As for the gondolas, we are planning on taking one section and placing beer and wine on it.
Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Grow, Mr. Sad? Okay. So I think like Mr. Donnelly, previously, a little bit different circumstances. You know, I think my thinking on these has changed a little bit in that, you know, it's really a competitive market amongst businesses. And, you know, if this is where you can do well and grow your business, great. If it doesn't work out, you know, that's up to your business. I think Route 1, you know, is an appropriate place for these. I know not too far down the street in the Rotary, there's the other gas station on the same side of the street that does have a similar license. So, you know, I don't, I can't predict how well your business will do with this, but you're making, you found a seller, so, you know, I would be in favor of this, but some of my colleagues may have different opinions. That being said...
If I may comment?
Oh, sure.
I totally understand your point and it's a very competitive business. My other locations are located, surrounded with multiple B&amp;W and liquor. The way we figured out how to become, differentiate ourselves is offer different products and also not be in your regular convenience store kind of high prices. So we offer a lot of exciting products, you're not going to find it on the market, and they're high-quality for a really good price. Some of it's closeout wine, some of it's a lot of stuff from Europe. We will still have the regular stuff that serves the convenience of the public, but we will also differentiate ourselves that if somebody is looking for exciting things, we will have it and we will not be a super expensive convenience store kind of product. So I think that attracted a lot of, attracts a lot of people in our businesses and they don't feel like they're going to pay a surplus for just convenience. And that business strategy has been working very well for us.
And you're excited.
And serving the customers very well.
Yeah, no, I understand that and, you know, I would pretend to know how your business operates and obviously you've been successful enough to have multiple businesses. But that, the pitch that you're giving us was exactly the same pitch that this place that never opened up gave us and said that they were going, you know. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I think sometimes, you know, you don't know what's going to happen, but...
There's always a measure of risk in anything.
Yeah.
We like to take risks and we hope for the reward. Obviously, it's an investment, it's a big investment. And, but, you know, we, you can't win if you don't take risks and we would like to. It's a calculated risk, it's not a very big risk for us.
Yeah, good. Any other questions or comments?
I think you have to close the hearing.
First answer, public?
Do you want to ask?
Yeah, if there's anyone from the public that has questions, comments, or concerns. Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
On the motion?
Yes, Mr. Plasko?
Comments that were made by my colleagues during the hearing, I have to disagree with. You were here approximately 18 months ago, and we denied the license, and I don't see that anything has changed since then. Still in the same location. We still have multiple licenses, as you said yourself, surrounded by other beer and wine licenses on the same road. I don't see that that, within approximately two-mile stretch of the one road, Route 1, we now have three beer and wine and a full liquor license, which also sells beer and wine. Yours would be the fourth beer and wine, or the fifth in total. And that just seems like too much saturation. I think we're going to go from the auto mile to the beer mile, and I don't like that connotation. I don't see that there's any public need because of all the licenses that are already in that area or any common goods served by that. I think the location, as I've been saying, is geographically not appropriate because of, again, the saturation of licenses. So nothing's changed since 18 months ago. Your pitch, if you will, about, you know, craft beers and closeout wines, it's the same one we rejected 18 months ago. That was the same plan you had at that time. So I just don't see that anything has changed. And the fact that you're buying a license instead of a license on the table, a free license, as you referred to it, that's not the matter. It's the issue of your appropriate person to run the license if it has any benefits of the community, but I don't see that it does because of all the things I've already said. So I will have to vote against it.
I totally respect, I'm not supposed to...
No, the hearing's closed. Just between the board.
Okay.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Crowe. Mr. Sad?
I have the same favor as Bill does, and I think we're just saturating Route 1, and I've said it, that it's going to be the alcohol mile, and I voted against the other guy across the street down the road, but I'm just going to vote no on this one.
Okay, that's a no. Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Yes.
Voting? No.
No. Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, three to two. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You know the process, got to go through the ABCC and everything.
Yes, yes.
Good luck. Cost of luck.
Okay, 7:15. We're getting back on track. Mama's Incorporated Change of Manager Hearing. Jess, if you would be so kind?
Application is made for the licensing for the town of Norwood for change of manager from Bree and Paul McGee to Elias Akiki for Mama's Incorporated, 175 to 179 Railroad Avenue, Dover, Massachusetts, under Section 12 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Great. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Of course, gentlemen, if you could introduce yourself, tell us why you're here.
This is Elias Akiki. He's the owner of 175, 179 Railroad Ave, Mama's Inc. I'm John Paul Thomas. I represent Mr. Akiki.
Excellent, great. And this is a change of manager?
Yes.
Okay. First, I'll open up to questions, comments from the board.
When are you going to open? Nothing has anything to do with the manager per se.
As soon as possible. As soon as possible. We have full court press over there now. Everybody's there. We have...
See a lot of work going on over there.
I had a big concern about the period of time, but I assume you waited for the ABCC and then got started?
Just finishing up some old projects and then wanted to put the full court press on this, which is, that's what we're doing right now. That's the number one thing I'm doing every day. I start my day every day there until it's done.
I personally don't see anything wrong with your application or the gentleman to be the manager and the further background check as far as Cory and everything is done by the ABCC, and they won't approve it if there's an issue, so I have no problem.
Great, thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Sad?
Are you part of the Dr. Akiki family?
You know, if your name is Akiki, you come from one village in this world in Lebanon, so we all come from the same village.
And what village is that?
Fardebien in Lebanon.
I'm from Duma, Lebanon.
Oh, Duma, okay. Yes, I know of that place. A lot of Lebanese people here from Duma.
My only concern, Mr. Chairman, is I think before we approve a license and transfer, how much you have left for construction in there to make sure it's all signed off by the Board of Health, the Building Inspector, the Electrical Inspector? We talked about this two weeks ago, I think.
If I just may say, sorry.
No, no.
We're not transferring the license, sir. He's the owner of the property, the owner of the business. He's transferring the management from who, the prior, who we originally listed as the manager to himself. So we're not transferring this license. If I could just clear that.
Okay. I should make sure.
Good question. You were in previously before, and I think this was actually before you were on the board line.
Before I was here then.
Yeah, and so that's when you had showed us floor plans and the like.
Correct.
Yeah, so, but no, good question.
Thanks for straightening me out.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, so if Mr. Plasko says the application looks good, usually means the application looks good. Do you have any comments or questions for us?
Just want to thank you for having us here. Thank you for your patience. I know that's a spot in the square that we're all looking forward to.
Yeah.
Making it nice, and I assure you, it's going to be something beautiful when we're done.
Great.
Just make the food be good.
I'm going to keep it simple so far. We're going to try to make sure good food and cold drinks, for sure.
Are you going to have Lebanese food?
If my mom volunteers to cook, we will definitely have Lebanese food.
Okay.
Okay, great. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Do we get comment?
I, is it...
I think we take comment on a change of manager.
I don't think... It's a public hearing, you must have to. Anyhow, nobody here raised their hand. Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor? Chair votes aye. Pleasure of the board.
Motion we approve?
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor? Chair votes aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Great, congratulations.
Thanks for having us.
Let us know when you open up.
We definitely will, for sure. The whole state will know.
Thanks a lot. Okay. Mr. Ryan, Ms. Raymond, if you want to sit at the front again, thank you so much for waiting. I know we had to do things a little bit out of order. So you're here to give us just an update on the happenings at the airport, a construction update, maybe some other things that we could have a conversation on, and the floor shows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mark will touch on what we just finished up for construction, where we're at on that and what we can expect going forward with the next project. Mark is there every day, and he knows the ins and outs and probably could answer most of the questions a lot better than I, so I'll pass it on to Mark, where we just finished up, and then he'll touch on what's coming next.
So we just finished, it was actually a two-part project, one which was a reconstruction, relocation of a section of taxiway. It was pretty involved because of the environmental impacts out on the airport or protected wetlands out there. So that was quite a challenge, but the project is currently complete and in use. And the second part of the project was the airport parking lot. We had a stormwater filtration system installed underneath the parking lot, so the parking lot was out of service for about three months. It was a bit of a challenge also, especially with the tenants, because packing was very limited. But that project was complete as of Wednesday last week. Parking lot is reopened.
Okay. Anything further, any?
The only other thing, we were scheduled to start runway 10 to 8 reconstruction. That's been pushed off till the spring. Time is running short, and trying to get a paving contractor lined up before snow flies was becoming more and more difficult, so the general contractor decided to hold off on that till spring. So that's sometime in March was the last we were told.
And so the delay of that, what's the implication in terms of flights, flight patterns, neighborhood noise, or could you go into depth on that a little bit more? The delay?
As far as delaying it? Well, it's just, you know, it's really not going to affect anything now. It's more so in the spring when the project starts, because that runway will be out of service probably about two months.
That 1028 will be out of service for about two months. And then what will that mean for flights?
It'll be somewhat limited, you know. Runway usage is dictated on wind direction. It's a Towis call, not mine. But, yeah, you know, we're essentially going to be losing our east-west runway for two months, so it will limit some of the flight traffic in and out of the airport.
Okay. So I know that the Airport Commission and yourself, Ms. Raymond, have been having regular meetings where Neighborhood Group has been in attendance, and they've reached out to me and asked to sort of be a sounding board for some of these things, that if we could have just a quick conversation. And, you know, I'm learning more about sort of the FAA and their role and your role, and I know that you have made efforts, and I appreciate that, to, when possible, give direction to flights coming in and out to try to minimize the impact of noise over the Winfield and Rock Street neighborhood to varying degrees of success, I think. If you could talk a little bit about the understanding of what's been going on, because I've been getting communications probably since March of last, of March of this year, so about nine months or so. And with people saying that it's, the noise is worse than it's ever been. You know, I think those are some direct quotes. And I think the flight number, because Mr. Ryan, at one meeting I went to, you showed me that the flight number actually hasn't changed a whole lot. I think it's really just the direction and possibly the height. I don't want to get too off track, because I know you were here to talk about construction. I think it's related, but if you could speak to that a little bit and maybe talk about some of the things that perhaps we could continue to do to try to mitigate noise or improve the quality of life for those neighbors, because I think that's really the issue here.
Yeah, we do have a noise abatement program. It's voluntary. It's not regulation. I can't tell pilots that they have to do it. Most, everybody's pretty good about it, but because it's voluntary, some people obviously are not going to abide by it. But beyond that, you know, I, my function down there is to manage the facility. Managing the airspace belongs to the FAA. It belongs to the federal government. So, you know, we try to, you know, work with the pilots, work with the residents best we can, but, you know, at the end of the day, there's only so much we can do. I know recently it was brought to our attention that there was a town bylaw that was enacted, I believe it was the end of 1986, to impose a curfew down there at the airport, and that was repealed in early 1987 because it was brought to court, and it was deemed unlawful for us to impose a curfew at the airport. So it's a, it's a public use airport. We also sign grant assurances for all these projects, and when you sign the grant assurances, you're telling the federal government that you're going to operate the airport without restrictions, things like that, so...
And I, thank you, I appreciate that. I think that's sort of one of the things that I struggle with is that, and I know that you've given out memos and really have made an effort to try to get the, either the flight schools or private pilots to come into the airport or exit the airport in a certain way. Doesn't seem like perhaps that advice is being heated, but, you know, and I'm kind of collectively asking if there's anything that we can do, because at the end of the day, I think, again, the quality of life of the people in that neighborhood, it's not as good as it has been in the past, for whatever reason. And I think that's the thing that concerns me, and certainly not blaming the Airport Commission or you, Ms. Raymond, but just collectively, I don't know, you know, Mr. Plasko, I know we talked about this a little bit, and, you know, you're sort of resigned saying there isn't a whole lot that we can do, and I'm sure you've encountered this before.
All right, there's, you said there's little they can do. We have even less control. Really, all we do is appoint the Airport Commissioners and subject to working together and being concerned about the communities, not a whole lot we can do. If we could do anything, I would have switched the way the planes come and go, as they do now, because I've got a nice backyard, and I sit on my deck, and we can't finish a conversation. So, and I'm way up on Manhattan Street, which people would probably think isn't even affected, but I know some of my colleagues have been out there with me, and, you know, finish one conversation without being interrupted by something flying by. So if I had the power, I would, but we really don't have much direct control. And I know you fellows don't have even that much more than we do, but, so we just work, talk with people, talk with the control tower. I don't know to what degree they have control, who actually decides those things, but I know our, other than lobbying and being a voice, there's not much authority we actually have.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, pretty much in agreement with my two colleagues here. We, when you do come before us for the grant assurances from FAA, you know, it's always initially stunning to a new member of the Select Board to see that those grant assurances pretty much are telling the Board of Selectmen to stay out of the business of the Airport Commission. So I commend the work that you are doing with the neighbors. I see some are here. You know, I think that it's abundantly clear that you are trying to work with the operators on flight patterns and things such as that, and beyond trying to influence those decisions and provide information and guidance, you know, I don't know much more you can do. So, but I do believe the work that you are doing and the neighbors being as vigilant as they are, it's, it may be frustrating, but I think that if folks just keep that up, hopefully maybe there'll be some messages that will be learned or accepted by the operators to change. But I think beyond offering the board support to the Commission as it tries to resolve these issues, I don't believe we have much more to do. If I might just also suggest something on the month, on the report that you have here, if I may? So I like, a very good report. You make some references to monthly revenues and monthly fuel flowage rates. I'm wondering if the next rendition of this, if you could add to that itemized list, is the revenue that we are receiving from landing fees, which along with the fuel flowage rates are combined, providing the airport with some pretty good revenues, and I think we'd be interested in just seeing the ups and downs of the trends from those revenues.
The landing fees, I get those quarterly, so you might not see them...
That's fine.
In every monthly report, but certainly I can pass that along.
Sure, thank you.
More than happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Crowe, Mr. Sad?
No, we're...
And Mr. Mizuka, feel free to chime in too. But, you know, I think some of the things that we were doing or have been doing, I think construction updates on the website on a regular schedule is helpful. I think the more information that people, especially the neighborhood, has, you know, the better. There was some discussion about any kind of noise assessment. Have we done any of that recently, or?
Not recently, the noise study?
Yeah.
No, we did it...
And how does that work? Do we, does the FAA do it, or do we?
It's with the FAA. It's a very long process.
And how would we, if we were interested in doing that, how does that happen?
That's currently on our CIP.
It's on our, yep, it's on our CIP, but it's a few years old.
Okay. Yeah. And when we haven't, when's the last time we did one? Did we ever do one?
Yeah, it was before, 1999?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yeah, it's been a while.
Okay. And I, you know, someone had the suggestion, they had emailed me about any kind of communication that we can give to pilots before they take off as like a reminder. I don't know if that's possible.
We actually do have large signs at the end of all the runways...
I know you have the signage, yeah.
For the noise abatement, and we also have the chats that, you know, we pass out to the different businesses at the airport, hand them out to the pilots.
Okay. Okay. Um, I think the last thing was that there, there was, um, I was forwarded, uh, an email from, uh, Lindsey White from the FAA. Um, and I won't read the whole thing, but, um, you know, I think some of the relevant conversation is, uh, she writes, uh, if you'll indulge me for a moment, the FAA does not determine the number of planes that may arrive and depart an airport. Neither does the FAA determine airports' quiet hours. We, we talked about that. Such decisions are typically made by an airport and airport commission. Um, the FAA can work with an airport to identify potential ways of mitigating aircraft noise. Addressing this concern requires collaboration among the FAA, air carriers, airports, airport manufacturers, research universities, local communities, and elected officials. So kind of a long-winded way of saying, you know, I think we're invested in trying to improve the quality of life of, of the neighbors. I know that you are. Um, you know, it seems that there are other parties as well that, that possibly we could work with. So I'm just, you know, just saying, um, this is something that I think we want to work on. Um, how we get there, I'm not sure. I don't know what the roadmap is there, but, um, it's, it's obviously a concern. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, so, you know, maybe at a future, oh, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you. Um, one small nudge we might try in terms of upward lobbying is I seem to, I don't have the website address right off the top of my head, but I seem to recall the FAA having a form, a digital form you can send in about noise in a particular area. Um, does anything preclude us from just publishing that information prominently for people?
That's actually on the, it's on the, it's on the airport page in the town website under the, uh, noise complaint section. Um, that link is on there.
Yeah. And I think, Mr. Mizuko, we had talked about it. You know, you, you can't, we can't limit the business that any of these, uh, flight schools or private, uh, agencies.
Right. It's important to remember. It's frustrating for everyone.
Yeah.
And if we could just do away with it, I think we would. Um, we don't control what goes on in the air and that's challenging sort of for, um, for everyone. Um, it's always worth reporting things to the FAA and working with them. I'm a class half empty guy when it comes to working with the FAA. I don't know if we'll ever get any, um, relief there. I always remind people, keep in mind the same problems that we're dealing with. People outside of Logan and airports in New York and LA are dealing with the same issues and the FAA also focuses on them and I don't think they get any results out of it. It's, um, it's an airport that's 90 years old and it's a system that was designed for, uh, for a different era. And I always remind everyone, the ownership we have of the airport, if, um, it ever ceased to be used for municipal or for an airport purpose, would revert back to the original owners who could then use it for.
We've, we've heard you say that about.
An airport purpose. So we're, we're, we're in a bit of a pickle. If the airport keeps out skyscrapers, that's one benefit to it.
Oh, that's true, right? Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I, I just want to not lose focus of this because I.
I'd encourage residents to reach out directly to the businesses at the airport. I mean, at the end of the day, telling a, um, you know, we can't tell somebody where to drive their car necessarily on a public road, but the more businesses.
But we can throw detour signs.
Uh, well, we can and maybe I can try to put a drone up in the air, figure that out. But then the FAA would make me get a license and tell me where I can't fly my drones. But just make sure you reach out directly to the businesses too so that they can hear the same level of frustration that I know that Mark and Mark are always sharing with them as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, my thing is, you know, the airport's not new. It's been there a while, but it, it, it seems like, um, these issues have been exasperated.
Yeah. My first year here, I lived in the apartments right behind where Mr. Plasko is. And Sunday morning, you'd be trying to sleep in and v, you'd hear him. I think it's, it's a frustration everyone that lives in town shares.
Yeah. Okay. Appreciate you being here. Um, I think it's probably a conversation that'll keep happening. Um, oh, one other thing I had too. I know that your, um, the airport commission meetings are at four o'clock. Have we ever had a, a night meeting? Is that something that we control, that we set, we suggest? No?
It's up to that individual board.
Just, you know, just thinking that, and I, I know it's a, it's a lot to ask. It's a lot to ask for you to be here tonight after working all day. But I, I think if, um, you know, if we had, uh, a meeting in the future that was at a later time, you know, you just might get more representation from people. And maybe more operators could make it too because at maybe at four o'clock, they're still running their business, but in the evening they could come and hear from the residents and, um, you know, there's a lot of smart people in the room. I think that we can just keep working on it. So I appreciate you both being here and, um, the neighbors that came. I appreciate you being here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And certainly you're, you're all welcome to come down and visit. You don't have to get a holiday. All they have to come down, show you around the place.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you.
Get a feel for what actually goes on inside the fence down there.
As long as you don't take me, yep.
I'll go up with you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Okay. Um, new business, item four point, oh, sorry, cultural council applications. Do, is anyone still here that, that was interested? Okay, good. All right. Have a seat. Um, great. Um. Yeah. So if you could, uh, tell us, uh, who you are and, um, you got the floor for about a minute if you want to talk about your interest in cultural council and, uh, go, go right for it.
Yeah, sure. So my name's Sam. I've been in Norway my whole life. I go to school and now I'm Catherine Moore, senior this year. Um, so what I've been involved in, I worked at Oliva Alavadi for a while down the street from here. Um, and what I saw is that a lot of people who work there are new immigrants that live in Norway and they don't feel like their culture is being necessarily integrated into our society. So I wanted to work on that through the cultural council, which I feel like is something that they don't necessarily work on right now. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I have a big background in music. I've played music, played instruments my whole life. I've sang my whole life. I wanted to get that more involved in our town. And then in addition to that, my sister, she's a freshman this year at the high school and she has a bunch of friends who was interested in more outreach to their community, expanding their art, um, to, to the town itself and getting more involved in the town, maybe like going, going to the library and other areas like that. Um, so those are really the main reasons why I wanted to get involved. Again, it's my senior years, so I want to leave an impact before I leave the town.
Excellent. Good to hear. All right, Sam. Anyone have any questions for Sam?
I'm having trouble finding, oh, I just found, um, I did look at it earlier though. You went to Catherine Moore.
Yeah.
I had three to go. I went through Catherine Moore and I'm not, not going to hold, hold it again. So, no, um, thank you for your interest.
Yeah.
Can you remind me, does anyone remember from, we had the information last week, how many openings we have?
Um, I thought it was two.
I thought it was two, but I think he didn't show up last week, last meeting.
Yeah, we were making sure that we, um, we interviewed anyone that was in.
Sort of everybody who's applied.
I think it is two. But what, what we'll do is, you know, we'll make a decision.
Table for the next meeting.
To everyone, yeah. Yeah. Sam, do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Uh, we appreciate you sticking.
One question. Have you actually had contact with anybody who's currently on the cultural council?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've, I met with them last week and then I met with them last year a couple of times too.
Okay, great.
Great.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Are you at, are you at CM now or the high school?
Yeah, I'm at CM this year. My sis, my sister's at the high school this year.
Are you at the, on the golf team over there?
I was, yeah. Yeah, not this year. I was last year.
Coach Palermo?
No, it's, it's, uh, it was Jurassic and I had, what, what, didn't.
Okay, all right.
Doug.
Uh, I thank you for applying as well. And I think you've addressed this upfront, but I'll give you another opportunity to talk about it. So my, my question for you was what, what events or programs do you think the council should, uh, promote in support of its mission? Um, beyond what you said earlier, is there anything specifically for an event or a program that you'd like to advocate for if you were a member of the council?
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, for me, I'd be willing to get involved in teaching children how to work with different instruments and sing, uh, whether it be at the library in the background that we have there or at the, at the senior center, I'd be willing to go over there and play, um, play an instrument or lead, um, lead singing groups, uh, if we needed, if we wanted that. It's just something I'd want to run by the other people around the council.
That's great. And that's, uh, that's definitely the kind of work that the council does. So thank you, Sam, for your, your interest.
Thanks for coming in, Sam. So we'll get in touch with you.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you.
Sam, is there anyone else out in the hallway?
No.
Okay. Jess, did anyone else confirm or?
Uh, we didn't have anyone else confirm. We had a couple of people say they were interested.
Okay. At some point we're going to close the process. We'll do that now.
You're not here for the cultural council?
Oh, I don't think so. You were here for the airport, right?
I was here for you.
And you're just sticking around because these are fun?
I didn't want to just walk out.
Demons skip pass.
Uh, we've been walked out on.
Okay.
You're more than welcome to stay. You want to go.
Great. All right. Um, sorry. Uh, new business now. Four point one, review of draft warrant and yellow sheet. Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pull up another slideshow here. You guys get to hear from me twice a time. We are going to go through the finalized warrant, should the board want to, the board with it.
Is this the note we're supposed to sign up?
Uh, signing, yes. Uh, yellow sheet could be at a later date. Uh, I'll go through the articles one by one as in the past. Just grab me if, um, you want me to, uh, pause or have any questions and I'll answer them to the best of my ability. Uh, article one would be a revision of the town meeting bylaw that would achieve a couple of things. One, it would clarify some procedures currently in place at town meeting, which of the member badges would no longer require a, include a photo name and district number and a show of hands would be included as a manner of taking votes. Um, it's best practice for it to be in the actual bylaw, uh, for that to happen. It would also add electronic voting as a method. There was a town meeting committee put together sometime before the pandemic. So as you know, that was probably only three and a half years ago, but it feels like 30, um, that recommended we look at electronic voting, which is, um, Mary Lou and I both use the term clicker, uh, which I guess is quickly becoming a generational term, but you would get a clicker and that's how you'd vote at town meeting. It's actually become quite the norm in virtually all, um, all, um, towns in the Commonwealth.
Oh, no, I was on the, the group that was looking at the electronic about that before the pandemic essentially.
Okay.
And the recommendation then was to go towards it. It's just the pandemic sort of slowed everything down a little bit and we're doing remote meetings and everything else. Uh, article two would be a revision of the town meeting size bylaw. This was suggested by the town meeting size study committee of this board appointed and I believe heard a final report from in the last month or two. Uh, would reduce the number of seats from 297 to 261, decrease to 36. Uh, 29 seats per district would take effect in April of 2025. So this is just, uh, putting into effect that committee's recommendation. Article three would be a significant amendment to the PBCC or Permanent Building Construction Committee bylaw. This would, um, effectively remove the PBCC as a standing body and would, um, allow the town, should they so choose, to appoint a committee on a, uh, building by building basis if we needed one, but largely recognizes that with the facilities department, now they are managing a majority of the actual facilities, uh, related projects. Was there a question out there?
No.
No, we're just having some trouble with, uh, accessing the, um, documents electronically.
All right. Apologize for that. We'll look into that. Uh, article four would be an adoption of a new bylaw to charge interest. This will permit us to apply interest on overdue bills for police and fire. By law in Massachusetts, we are, uh, we are required to, um, pay wages within a regular pay period for any details that are worked. It's a law in, in any town in the Commonwealth. Sometimes the vendors that, um, need details or request them are 60 to 90 days late. We don't really have a means to, um, enforce collection, uh, to a certain degree, certainly not to assign penalties. So the money's coming out of the town or the taxpayer's account to front the cost and we'd like to assess interest, which is a common practice in a lot of towns, for late and overdue bills. That way, uh, we'll hopefully incentivize the, um, the, uh, late folks to pay them a little bit earlier. Articles five and six are the FM Global TIF. Article five would accept a new TIF for, create a TIF for FM Global. The board heard that presentation from the EDC last week. And article six would be, uh, just a technical amendment, uh, because the parcels are changing because they're constructing a new building. Uh, here you have the information that was provided to you as to what the exemption would be and the total projected investment of the FM Global TIF. Article seven would be the, uh, an opt-in to the specialized energy code. For several years, a number of towns in Massachusetts have been looking to, uh, create a mechanism by which buildings or new construction could be either all-electric or net zero. Um, the state, after turning down a couple of bylaws from different towns, finally created a system that allows that. It is an opt-in code. It would require new construction, only new construction, not renovations, uh, to be either, uh, net zero or net zero ready or all-electric. Uh, it would take place about six months after, uh, the existing code, uh, after adoption rather. And I know I did get one question from Mr. Plasko about would this replace the existing stretch energy code? And the answer is no. This is only for new construction. So the existing stretch code, um, stays on the books for renovations of properties. If you go back about 10 or 15 years from when the state first put in a stretch code, there was the code and then there was the stretch code. And then what happened over time is the code caught up to the stretch code and the stretch code became a little bit stricter. And it's continued on that march and is going to continue on that march. Eventually the state, the state does currently have, um, target goals for carbon emissions. Eventually those will work their way into their, uh, into the codes and it's about when we want to jump sort of ahead of these or jump behind them. We were on the later side of adopting the energy code, the stretch code. We'd be roughly among the first 20 communities in the state to do this, although I can tell you it's becoming a popular item on warrants for the fall. Article eight is just a capital plan. I'll, uh, save going through the full presentation for the board, uh, since we just started a few moments ago. Article nine would be a request for funding for a public safety staffing study. It's been at least 10 years, uh, since we did the last public safety staffing study. And, um, Mr. Plasko would probably have the institutional memory. I believe we did fire and not police and fire at the same time.
Just fire.
Just fire. So we'd like to look at police and fire, uh, comprehensively. Uh, obviously the community's changed in the last 10 to 15 years. Um, the services have changed in the last 10 or 15 years, but we would want to look at what the actual staffing levels, uh, should be and have an outside third party look at that.
And they'll look at over time, things like that, right?
Uh, yeah, they do. They really, they, they look at what your, your service, uh, what your call volume is and whether you're staffed to meet that call volume. And it might be, yes, your staffing is appropriate. It may be you should change this, you should add this, you should delete this. Um, my speculation at the outset, and this is just my own speculation, is that police staffing is probably in a good place. Fire staffing at 15 per group is good to achieve what we want, but it's hard to maintain 15 per group. But again, you want a third party to come in and really tell us this is how it should look and this is what you should, um, what you should be looking for. Uh, article 10, sorry, let's get ahead of here. Article 10 is, uh, more of a technical correction in a sense. The state is, uh, Norway, like every town in the Commonwealth is receiving a certain amount of money from the state as a result of the national opioid settlement. This happened about 20 years ago with the national tobacco settlements and health departments got little bits of money. Uh, the state makes us appropriate it. So our recommendation would be to appropriate it, um, to be expended at the, uh, by the health director. Uh, we're not sure if we're going to need to do this annually. Somebody at the state did tell me privately, they feel like they probably kind of messed this up because we might have to come to the town meeting every single year to ask for appropriate money for a specific purpose, even though this is the only purpose for which the money can actually be expended. That being said, we, we want to do it. We don't want it to just sit there. But can't be spent without, um, further appropriation. Article 11 is a transfer of funds for our meters. It's more of a technical, uh, technical correction. This is money that was collected last year for meters that we want to spend on meters. And it mirrors article 12, which would adjust the water and sewer budget to make sure that money we collect this year for meters will be spent on meters. And then we should not have to have a meter article on the warrant in the future forever.
David Hurner wiped that.
Uh, he, he, he will. We're, we're getting there little by little. We were going to tentatively, one of the reasons we didn't book it in the budget last year is we were going to look at what the meter rate should be, but we're undergoing a rate study and the recommendation is to hold it until that rate study is complete because there might be some other, um, information that comes out of that. But it's meter money that was collected for meters going only to meters. Article 13 is a curbside composting pilot program. Uh, it would establish a pilot program whereby about 500 participants will be able to have weekly curbside compost pickup. About 20 to 25% of the waste stream is food waste. Anything we can do to reduce that would be beneficial. This is not intended to be a permanent program. It is truly a pilot program where we want to get the concept up and running, subsidize it for a year, maybe a follow-up with a second year, but to hopefully get people in, more people into composting in the idea that it would hopefully reduce solid waste. The trash costs are going to continue to seriously impact our budget over the next five years. But as I said, it is a compost prob, uh, sorry, it is a pilot program. Uh, we wouldn't be funding this in perpetuity. It's to try to get it up and running and, uh, convince folks of the value of doing it.
Just on that article, since, um, I have suggested it, um, it is something that the Sustainability Committee Commission has identified as a, as a strategic action that town could pursue. Uh, my interest had, uh, was certainly generated by their observations, but having spent many, uh, a meeting with Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Ryan negotiating the, uh, waste management contract, it's, it's become apparent to me that, um, you know, we need to pay attention to the ways and means that we can divert items out of the waste stream since we are being charged big bucks these days for waste removal by the ton, uh, and that, uh, maybe a pilot program can show us a way to divert, um, compost materials that go into the, uh, waste stream now and thereby hopefully not only have some good environmental impact, but also be able to have a positive impact on our bottom line when it comes to waste removal costs, which are running into, I believe by FY '28, will be over $3 million, uh, for a line that was $2 million, less than $2 million as, as early as two or three years ago. Um, I, the board is, if the board is interested, I, I have talked to the Sustainability Committee and, uh, and they are certainly willing to come here on the next meeting to give you a little more detail.
Just a question. Is that Bob in front of your house, that little we used to have the buckets in the backyard?
Yes.
For the farms and stuff?
It's a the little buckets that you see around town are black earth composting. Yeah, and this would which I think about 60 people in town now take on a private basis. This would pilot 500 participants who would be willing to do composting and from that from that gather data in terms of what impact it can have on our waste stream.
Well, they come like a truck and just pick it up in five. Okay, I just didn't know. Okay.
Just like the old days, Mike.
Yeah, the buckets. I used to throw them down the ending for the cows and farms down there.
Article 14, request from the school department for funds for a the superintendent of schools' search process. Go in the right direction here. Article 15, a request for funds from free cash from the school department to allow a comprehensive review of school department's student services. This would allow the school community to conduct a comprehensive review of all aspects of student services, including special ed, nursing, guidance, and other people's services. Primary objective being to assess existing strengths and pinpoint opportunities for enhancement as the district continues its mission of providing exceptional educational services to all students in a fiscally responsible manner. Article 16 is also a request from the school department for funds to launch a social emotional enrichment program for students in grades one through eight. These skills are critical in helping students with problem solving, recognizing and managing emotions, forming healthy relationships with peers and adults, and considering and understanding the experiences of others. Article 17 would establish a new revolving fund for the extended day program. We've been discussing with the school department whether or not to transfer the extended day program over to the rec department. We would need to create the revolving fund this November to make that happen along to a timeline for it to formally transfer next July. For some reason, if we go ahead and vote this and then it doesn't happen, there's no harm, no foul. It's just a it's not an actual account. We put money into per se. It just sets it up. So it's just like opening a checking account with $0 in it. Article 18, request the finance commission to create a compensated absences fund. This would be to put aside a certain amount of money for payouts for sick or vacation time with the understanding that we would then start trying to budget centrally for those payouts. As you know, oftentimes, we're going to town meeting or doing a municipal transfer at the end of the year to payout to cover a payout for sick or vacation time. Considered a best practice in municipal finance, and given that we have a very healthy year with free cash, it's probably the year to do this and start to address the challenge.
Mr. Mazuko.
Yes, sir.
Just an observation about that. Am I correct that perhaps in a past audit, maybe this year or past, the this has come up as a something the town would consider should consider from an audit perspective as well?
Absolutely. It's a perennial pop-up item in just about every municipal audit that's out there. And it actually it does help towards your improving your credit rating. Again, we're AA+ so we only have one step to go, and I don't know if we'll get there given the overall wealth level of the community because that's a significant factor in determining credit rating. But on the one hand, we create a fund balance that it offsets a liability in the books. On the other hand, it actually has to do with whether or not your budgetary performance looks good. One of the things the rating agencies will look at is they'll say, okay, this is what you budgeted, and what did you spend? And in some cases, it's a simple analysis. Well, if an employee retires on June 15th, we have to pay him four weeks of vacation. What that actually shows is that the department had gone over budget. When you actually create a compensated absences account, it no longer shows that because those charges are booked elsewhere. So it's it's kind of like a little cheap trick to help all the credit score, so to speak. But if you think of the amount of internal time we spend at the end of the year, sometimes for transfers, just because somebody left and they had a couple of weeks vacation, you brought somebody on board, we're almost wasting. I mean, I don't say we're wasting more accounting time than we're taking, but we're wasting significant accounting time when we should have modernized our practice quite a while ago. The way it works, you put X dollars in the fund, you put Y in your budget line in a year where you spend more than what's in that budget line. It just comes out of the fund. If you spend less, it just goes into the fund. It's the exact same way that workers comp on unemployment work. We've just never done it for compensated absences.
So by way of an example, last year, we had to do some end-of-the-year transfers to cover the payout to a retiring fire or former fire chief who had quite a bit of compensated absent time on the book books, and we had to transfer months to cover that payment. Going forward with a compensated absence process, we don't need to do that because the liability will already be in our books.
Correct.
Okay.
Article 19 would be an appropriation for the override stabilization fund. We did there was a desire last year to take about $2 million of the Forbes money and put it into the override stabilization fund. We cannot directly do that. What we can do is use $2 million of free cash and put that into the override stabilization fund and use that $2 million to offset the $2 million we'd otherwise be using in free cash for the capital outlay plan. That wasn't presented in the numbers we showed earlier because we wanted capital outlay to finish its process so the finance commission could look at that and make that recommendation without making it more confusing. But this is just a mechanism to achieve what town meeting wanted to do last year.
And by doing this, we will have used $2 million for the capital plan, $2 million to the override stabilization fund. You still have a balance of
Little over $6 million.
Six million dollars.
Yeah, which we earmarked at least unofficially for the purchase of open space. Article 20 is a grant for Haw excuse me, Hosspool repairs. This is just a housekeeping article that allows us to apply for a grant or apply for the grant we've applied for for the Hosspool project. The board signed some housekeeping paperwork. Sometimes these just require a number of steps to go through. It's possible. We may or may not get the grant, but want to at least give it the best shot we can. And Article 21 is just our some corrections in unpaid bills. We'll have an unpaid bills article, and then there's a couple of grants. Sometimes, as you know, grants get closed out, and then in the settling of the year process, it's realized that they should have been left open for a grant. But if that information's not received at time, they get closed to free cash, we'll then reimburse them from free cash.
Shouldn't those be separate articles?
They it depends on how you want. We can make it separate articles.
They should be separate articles.
These three items are
Certainly require a different votes.
They do. The three articles are all appropriation. They'd all be an appropriation from free cash. You're right. Technically, the unpaid bills requires nine tenths to pass, but if it fails, you're legally required to pay the bills anyway. So we could separate it. We could separate it in two motions.
First, I think we've gotten into a habit of trying to shortcut things and cut out articles. It's still the same thing. You have to take a vote on it. I think it's appropriate to be separated.
You want separate motions and separate articles?
Personally, I think it should be separate.
Separate articles.
Do they both require nine tenths vote?
No, just just unpaid bills.
So it does make sense to separate them if they the standard for the vote is different.
Six one-way, half-dozen the other way. I mean, if we're worried that folks are going to reject the unpaid bills, that we would then legally still have to go pay anyway, it's really
Let's separate them up.
It just looks cleaner.
We can do that. Last year, at the end-of-the-year closeout, we had one article for the end-of-the-year closeout that included internal transfers and grant reimbursement. So I think that's where it where it came from. But it's 30 seconds of work to create two articles. And that's it. So 22 articles warrant should the board want to go forward with all these articles.
Okay, discussion.
We're not reviewing the yellow sheet tonight, right?
No, we have a draft yellow sheet for the board.
We can we can make adjustments to it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's up to you. I mean, if you wanted to take a position on the articles tonight, you could. The yellow sheet, usually everyone likes to read through it and
Yeah, we want to make sure that, you know, specifically language, like from the school department is
We got the language from that.
From them directly?
Yeah.
Good.
Can you tell me Article 10?
Yeah.
And what's written on the yellow sheet so far? There's nothing about I wouldn't be necessarily in the article, but in the yellow sheet, I don't see any reference to amount of money. What are we talking about?
It's so I believe it's $140,000 for this year. Don't quote me on that. We'll get the exact amount. And then it's a 40-something thousand dollar a year every year after that for 20 years.
So will we get that into the yellow sheet?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that was a late addition because the health department, we need to do it at some point, and D R recommends you do it. We're just they haven't necessarily decided where they're going with it.
Once once this is approved, the warrant I'm talking about now, when would town meeting members have this?
The warrant, if you approve it tonight, you can send that out as soon as you want. We usually send it out with the yellow sheets, but the warrant other I mean, give me a day to make that last correction. The warrant's ready to go.
So town meeting is November?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Couple weeks. Editorializing, I have no problem with any reason to restrict any of these things from articles from being on the law, but I guess it's my night to be critical. Just as I said, the the water towers could have been a presentation to us earlier than tonight. I would have liked to have the opportunity to have further discussion to sell me one way or the other on a couple of these items that we didn't really see until the warrants before us. I happened to see them because I was on a group reviewing the warrant itself, but as a selectman up here at this table, to have a discussion of them, we really didn't see the stretch code.
Stretch code. That was the one that you
The composting, and I don't have any reason to think I'm against either of those, but I also have more homework to do, and at least I have between now and town meeting to do that homework. But I want to make sure town meeting members have some time, too.
Sure.
Realize this is coming before them.
Composting will go into depth at the next meeting. We'll have them in with Bob. But yeah, I see your point, Bill.
Other than that, I'm fine.
I just would just add, just I know that we our first draft, we had an article for related to stormwater utility committee recommendation. Just as an update that we didn't we the committee is not recommending going forward that article currently. We'll revisit the the recommendation and timing for the article subsequent to the following meeting. So there'll be more information coming in that. But the timeline has changed. The committee believes that there's still opportunity to do more outreach prior to this spring.
Great.
So we hope that Motion to approve the warrant as presented with the one amendment, and the board members assign as soon as is prepared.
Motion to approve the warrant made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Mazuko. Okay. Item 4.2, one-day liquor permit request St. Catherine's Home and School Association. Submitting request for a one-day liquor permit for a purse bingo fundraiser event at the St. Catherine's Cafeteria on October 26, 2023 at 6:30 PM with 150 guests expected.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.3, Impact Norwood for discussion. I think we just wanted to formally
I am prepared.
Okay, you got a frisbee. Do we do we need a vote here or?
I don't know. Were they asking for any member or just one representing the board?
They were asking for membership from the support, but they had expressed an interest in particular members of the board. I did meet with them prior or I met with one of them prior. So I'm totally interested. I'm excited for it. So if the board is willing to pick me, I'm in.
And we also waited to see if Mr. Donnelly was with us?
Yes.
I will defer to Ms. Grow, I think.
You sure you don't want to?
My cup run the fellow.
Shot tank, two of yous.
He was in the alley, one step back.
I make a motion to to approve Ms. Grow's participation as our representative.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Amanda. That's really cool. Item 4.4, traffic study, safety committee recommendations submitting the minutes and recommendations from the most recent traffic safety committee meeting. Ms. Mazuko, do you have anything to add here?
No, the board has just a couple of recommendations from the latest traffic safety advisory committee meeting.
I do have one.
Mr. Donnelly?
So I'm going to vote to approve this. I do have one item I do want a traffic safety committee to do a little more work on. There was a they do reference a concern from a resident of Mylod Street regarding truck traffic down Mylod. No action is recommended for signage or changes, but I think the report indicates that that some of that traffic increase could be due to the construction of the middle school. I just want the middle I just want the traffic safety committee to just check with the with the middle school building committee. I was under the impression that the construction traffic coming into Coakley was strictly from the Walpole Line, Washington Street into the Coakley. I wasn't aware that the Mylod Street was being was was part of the truck route for the school. I just want a little clarification on that from from the committee if possible.
We will investigate that.
And then just for the next meeting, and we can do this offline, but I just had a couple agenda items for traffic concerns that were brought to me, and I'll just make sure that those go to your office.
Yeah, email them. It's the best way to get them to put them in the agenda queue for traffic safety.
Great, okay.
Make a motion to approve the traffic committee, safety committee recommendations?
Motion to approve the recommendations made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.5, 1223 Washington Street Lip Letter for the board to authorize the chairman to sign.
Make a motion to I'm sorry.
Mr. Plasko?
I was just going to make the same motion. I think authorize and direct the chair to sign it.
Okay.
We we approved this taking the step last week. We just wanted to see the letter first. To me, it's fine. So I make a motion to authorize and direct the chair.
And you are the man to to know that. So if you're fine with it, I think that's a good thing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those on the motion, Mr. Sad.
Point of information, I'm not sure I have to recuse myself from this vote, but I probably should.
Probably worth abstaining from.
Yeah.
Okay, just sure. Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye with one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Sad. Appreciate that. Item 4.6, performance review process for general manager for discussion. Mr. Donnelly?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mr. Elaine. So this is subsequent. This is just a document I prepared subsequent to the vote of the committee at the of the board by the suggestion of Mr. Plasko to outline a possible ways and means and process for conducting an annual promise performance review for the general manager. By way of background, this this is just a best practice that I believe the town lacks right now. And I think we've we've tried to re-start it a time in previous boards without without much success. My interest was kind of generated by just attending the M and A annual conference earlier this year where I attended a presentation on board of selectmen's work with general managers. And 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 much of the detail provided by the by the presenters were focused on this practice of having a formal performance review process, not unsimilar to that that the a school superintendent would have, for example. So this was just my first cut, if you will, at developing a process that we could consider, discuss, revise as necessary. And if it has merit, if there are components of it that folks are like, then I would suggest that the further work could be done, perhaps by engaging a human resources consultant, for example, to help us put the tools and forms together to do so. But that's that's just a first pass at an approach to formalizing an annual review process. And I would say that this is this is strictly a best practice. This is not anything this is not a commentary of Mr. Mazuko's performance. This is just a best practice that I think we do lack, and we are we're better off for having taken the time to to put forward this best practice.
Great. Any comments from the board? Ms. Grow?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge your effort on this. It's really appreciated. This very closely mirrors to what I see in the private sector over the years in terms of appropriate reviews, especially of very senior leadership. So I I'm in favor, but I really like the proposal. And obviously, if there are, you know, small tweaks that we want to make, there's plenty of opportunity for that. But on the whole, I thought it was very solid.
Mr. Plasko?
I was just going to pretty much say the same thing. Thank Mr. Donnelly for the work. It lays out a process that seems pretty good. I don't know if the managers have reviewed it.
I I have. I as I was telling Mr. Donnelly today, I think I've worked full-time since I'm 18. This is the only job I've had where I haven't had an annual performance review. So we've been a little behind the curve. So it's long overdue.
So
And we're getting great free work out of Mr. Donnelly. So we should bring in a consultant who can help facilitate these processes. But we've already cut that cost in half by making Mr. Donnelly do this work. So if you're interested, Bob, we've got other things I could have you do that I don't have to pay consultant for.
We'll take it under advisement.
So so this is great. I guess the question is, what's the next step on when might be taking that?
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that we we take the document, and I'd be more than happy to take the lead on this and just this would probably require some some discussions with like our HR director on looking at the consultant world for identifying a HR consultant who could take this information and help put some structure behind it. I do have some ideas about that, too, but I think it would be important to engage our HR director, not in development of the form or the process, but rather Lisa will have, I believe, some good recommendations for HR consultants who do this kind of work in the municipal world.
So down the road, we'd be probably looking for some assistance from a consultant. But so this doesn't drop tonight. You're going to continue to carry ball and get us there?
Yeah.
Thank you. So moved.
I'll just add, too. I know that we had talked about, you know, we wanted to be fair to you and give you feedback, and I think you and give you feedback and I think Mr. Plasko and I, having been on, you know, during COVID, we kind of got behind on a few things. This was one of the things that Mr. Plasko addressed as, as being a need and I appreciate you and the work you've done and I think it's going to be a good process and also, you know, give you the opportunity to talk about achievements, goals, priorities and make that really a clear, concise document that we can all share, so.
One more comment if I may.
Yes, sir.
So the process, as you've noted, has a starting point, or one of the starting points is a development of goals and objectives for a fiscal year. And I just wanted to just put out there that this is something that Mr. Mazuko has already had put great thought to and, and, and I know he has a working document that at the appropriate time, the board can certainly work at Mr. Mazuko to review those goals and objectives. And let me put some context regarding the ones that we feel very strongly are the priorities.
Right.
I, I say that because I don't believe that, I just think that perhaps we don't need to fully engage an HR consultant for all this work. I just think, starting with working on goals and objectives for this fiscal year, something that we, we could do internally without the assistance of a consultant.
As a first step.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Great. Okay. Item 4.7, deeds for signature of the board.
Motion to approve the deeds.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item five, memoranda.
Motion to approve memoranda and I just would like, like to note the, the police, the police chief's letter of commendations for a couple of officers who were engaged in, in, in saving of a life of a Norwood resident and for the Board of Selectmen to express their appreciation for the actions taken by those officers in that life-saving event.
Great. Motion approved, memoranda with notation of appreciation made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Mr. Mazuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the board has probably heard enough from me tonight, but just one short update. One of the two houses in front of the middle school has been taken down. If you have a chance to, call it the Ivets property, if you have a chance to take a look, it is already changing the look of what will be the building and it actually, coming into town kind of makes the Morse House look magnanimous, which I didn't know was necessarily possible, but it did. The other one should be down within a week.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Selectmen's agenda. Mr. Sad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things on the agenda. Two, Rec Department had Jerry Miller is recuperating from his surgery and I want a speedy recovery for him. And Bear, Mike Colley, had a little surgery and he's doing remarkable and I want to just say a shout out to him. Also, the football team, Coach Manny and the staff and the players. What a great win the other day for Norwood. It was just like Friday Night Lights, spectacular, great crowd. And I want to thank the chain crew. They do a great job. They don't get the recognition that Tank and the guys did over the years, Joe Curran and the guys that, and gals, Jean Brown that did it. And also the Coakley name, I want to thank the school committee for continuing, keeping that name and the people who worked so hard to keep it and fight for it. And congratulations to all of them. And also, big weekend for the Sad Clan. My daughter got proposed over the weekend, Nicole, so congratulations out there, Nicole. And my daughter Brianna here from LA with Kelly Brown, they moved out to LA on us and she's back for the weekend, so shout out to my daughter Brianna. And the other thing, a couple more things was the self-norwood Chairman's Park, and I can meet with Tony and anybody else that wants to go over that, too. We have a dedication for that. The benches are going to be in pretty soon, we need the nameplates. And the underground lights, we can talk about and think about tapping the light budget and the light commission, as commissioners, we can tap that possibly, it was a good suggestion by one of the members. And that's it. Everything's going great and everybody have a great weekend.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we had talked a little bit about that too, maybe for feasibility study, right? An updated study.
Yeah, put an, put an item on the board, future board agenda, the next one on the first thought.
Yeah, for future light agenda meeting, would that be more appropriate or?
Just the next board agenda is fine.
We can do that.
Remember, as I always remind everyone, we technically don't have light commissioners, it's just you guys.
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sad, appreciate that. Great. Ms. Grow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a small event update. I was able to attend the book reading on the common last week. It was a very good event. We had multiple members of obviously our town leadership and staff, community members. So it was a very nice event. Everyone was able to not only be present and quietly read together, which was very nice. Appreciation for getting a pause on the music on the common, but also people contributing lists of books that were important to them, which was really neat to see from the community. So overall, a really successful event, really peaceful, really enjoyable, raising good awareness. And then upcoming events, as a reminder, the craft affair is coming, so that will be on Saturday up at the high school. The event is from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM. And again, this benefits the various student groups and the post-prom parties, so hope to see folks out there on Saturday.
Great, thanks.